...
That we can do, we're more than glad to listen to you. All right, but anything else we can't really do anything about, we can't do anything on other issues other than the stuff that we can address, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
My name is Stephanie Phillips, AKA Schlepo. Good morning Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your service to the country. I'm here today to thank and honor all military members and their families, past and present, from every country around the world for their service and sacrifice. I wonder if there's a historian or actuary who could estimate how many lives have been lost since the beginning of time fighting over things like religion, natural resources, treasuries, rebuilding contracts, and sadly, population control. Every generation asks, are we better off today than our parents were? For the first time in modern history, many are answering no, and they and their parents are seriously concerned about bringing new life onto the planet. September 21st is International World Peace Day. I learned about it and was truly inspired by Ms. Miller's school play here in Berkeley County at Potomac Intermediate School. On Tuesday, I invited the Washington County Commissioners to suggest it be put on the outside school billboards as the new theme, "Have a Safe and Peaceful Summer." And I am inviting you to do the same and consider celebrating it. Labor Day is the first weekend in September and has taken on new meaning. Grandparents' Day is the second weekend. The third weekend, Washington County has a Citizens Emergency Preparedness Day and a Women's Expo Program worth modeling. Perfect opportunity to coordinate special interest groups such as our serving and protecting civil servants, the police, fire department, EMS, healthcare workers, teachers, coaches, instructors with recreation departments, and lifeguards, preparing all citizens for emergencies. A suggestion was made for them to move their Women's Expo to Sunday, which is held at the library, and considering a complimentary theme with emphasis on families, including children and seniors. Commissioner Wagner is the committee chair for the Women's Commission. I don't know if we have one. I suggested some of the ladies in leadership, who I've met and thought might consider helping. I could provide a list and contact information upon request, or you could view their Commissioners' meeting. I grew up in an area where we all knew our neighbors and civil servants who lived and worked in our communities in Montgomery County, with opportunities and activities where most children could participate and make friends visiting neighborhoods all over the county. How fortunate we were and how safe we felt before the term Neighborhood Watch was invented. One country, one state, at a time, joining together here in the Mid-Atlantic region, which has major national security interests, but helped serve as the model promoting peace in the north, south, east, west, providing a venue for everyone. Feeding countries like Israel and Palestine, companies like Macy's and Gimbel's, McDonald's and Burger King, coworkers, neighbors, and families like Appalachians, infamous Hatfields and McCoys. The skies and the dams are the limit, could share a meal, entertainment, and quality time together, possibly resolving their differences, learning to coexist, thus promoting and ensuring peace and prosperity for the planet and future generations to come. Thank you for your time, and please, with all due respect, consider implementing this public comment with or without our neighboring state. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, I move we approve the agenda for Thursday, May the 26th. If there's no modifications or changes.
There is a modification.
Hold the interview with Tracy Rogilia for the senior services board.
Yeah, amend it for that.
Amend that.
Okay. All right, entertain a motion, or the second?
Second.
Any discussion on motion? If not, all fair say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries? Purchase order, Mr. Davis?
There are actually two purchase order logs in your packet today. The one is your regular purchase order log. There really isn't any, any, anything of issue on that log. The second log is the poll worker log, totaling about $100,319, which will take care of payment of the poll workers, these contracted contractual workers. There may be one or two strikers, I think, Tracy, that we'll have next week, but this captures the majority of your poll workers. We did budget $174,691 for poll workers, so it's considerably under what we had budgeted, so I have no reason not to recommend that you approve both.
All right. Anybody have any questions on the purchase order? All right. Mr. Davis, you have 12 internal budget revisions.
Yes, sir. It's that time of year. We have five weeks left to the fiscal year. So we have State Budget Revision Number 12, which will be considered later today. In a week or two, we'll have State Budget Revision Number 13. We have until mid-June to get our final State Budget Revision to the State Auditor's Office. Between now and then, we'll be moving money around within funds via State Budget Revision, so that, you know, our intent is at the end of the fiscal year, we have no internal line items that has, have a deficit balance, although some last-minute spending, sometimes that's not always possible. In addition to the 12 internal budget revisions, the deadline for encumbrances is last week, and we'll be discussing those in a few minutes. Some of the internal budget revisions are directly in support of the encumbrance requests. The first request is for Department 402 County Clerk. The Honorable Elaine Malk is requesting that she be allowed to decrease line 230 contracted services by $8,000. That account currently has an unencumbered fund balance of $14,965.05, with 2/10 of a percent spent to date, and increase line 342 record books by $8,000. That account currently has an unencumbered fund balance of $5,000. Again, in a few minutes, you'll see that Mrs. Malk is requesting an encumbrance of $8,314 for record books, so she'll need that additional funding for that encumbrance. The next request from Mrs. Malk is for Department 413 Elections. She's being, she's requesting that she be allowed to reduce line 230 contracted services by $3,000. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, that account currently has an unencumbered balance of $174,691, less the $100,319 that's in the poll workers' purchase order log. She will be requesting two encumbrances for the Elections Department totaling $10,815. She's requesting that her supplies and materials be increased by $3,000. Current unencumbered fund balance is $8,515. The two encumbrances that she is requesting, as I mentioned, is $10,815. If approved, the $3,000 internal budget revision will increase the availability of funds to $11,515.52. The next three requests are from Gary Wine, Information Technology. All three of these are to correct budget deficits. The first request from Mr. Wine is he's requesting that he be allowed to decrease line 341 Supplies and Materials by $12,000. Current unencumbered fund balance is $139,921.19, or 81.3%. An increase line 211 telephones by $12,000. That account currently has a deficit balance of $5,277.68. And if the council will recall, we pay all of the county's cell phones, regardless of what departments are assigned to out of IT. The next request from Mr. Wine, oh, Mr. Wine, is again, Department 428. He's requesting that he be allowed to decrease line 459 Capital Outlay by $4,000. Current unencumbered fund balance is $8,625, with 77.2% spent to date, and increase line 222 dues and subscriptions by $4,000. That line item currently has a deficit balance of $3,391.18. The final request for Information Technology, Mr. Wine's requesting that he be allowed to decrease line 341 Supplies and Materials by $80,000. As I mentioned previously, that account has an unencumbered fund balance of $139,921.19, less the $12,000 of the previous Internal Budget Revision request, leaving a balance of $127,921.09, and an increase line 223 Professional Services by $80,000. That account currently has a unencumbered fund balance, or a deficit balance of $70,479.19. As we build through IT services, when we get payment for those services, we just put it in Supplies and Materials, and then we distribute it throughout his budget as it's needed. That's why his Supplies and Materials unencumbered fund balance always seems so, seems so high. The next several requests, actually six requests, are from Sheriff Nathan Harmon. The first request, Sheriff Harmon's requesting that he be allowed to decrease, and they're all for Department 700 Law Enforcement, be allowed to decrease line 220 Advertising and Publications by $1,309. Current unencumbered fund balance is $6,021.43, with 14% spent to date.
$1,308, is it not?
I'm sorry, $1,308. An increase line 212 Telephone by $1,308. That account currently has an unencumbered fund balance of 6 cents. He is requesting the encumbrance for printing in the amount of $1,307.47, which will be on your encumbrance request that we'll discuss in a few minutes. The next request from Sheriff Harmon is he requests that he be allowed to decrease line 222 Dues and Subscriptions by $2,415. Current unencumbered fund balance is $2,415, with 65.5% spent to date, and increase line 214 Travel by $2,415. That account currently has a deficit balance of $293.21. The request is to not only correct the deficit balance, but anticipation of additional traveling expenses that may be incurred over the next five weeks. The next request from Sheriff Harmon is decrease in line 229 Court Cost and Damages by $846. Current unencumbered fund balance is $3,657.42, with 25.1% spent to date, and increase line 223 Professional Services by $846. That account currently has a deficit balance of $50.95. The fourth request from Sheriff Harmon for Law Enforcement is a request to decrease line 220 Advertising and Publications by $550. As I mentioned previously, that does have an unencumbered fund balance of $6,021.43, less the previous request of $1,308, leaves an anticipated unencumbered fund balance of $4,713.43. An increase postage by $550. That account currently has an unencumbered fund balance of 49 cents. The next request for Law Enforcement, Sheriff Harmon's requesting that he be allowed to decrease line 341 Supplies and Materials by $23,806. Current unencumbered fund balance is $59,567.79, with 78.8% spent to date, and increase line 221 Training and Education by $23,806. That account currently has an unencumbered fund balance of $3,549.18, with 93.7%, 93.7% spent to date. Sheriff Harmon is requesting two encumbrances for training totaling $23,806. So this would provide adequate funding for those two encumbrances if the council decides to approve those. The final request for Department 700 Law Enforcement, Sheriff Harmon's requesting that he be allowed again to decrease line 341 Supplies and Materials by $5,000. The previous, previously mentioned unencumbered fund balance is $59,567.79, less the previous request for reduction of $23,806. He gives a tentative unencumbered fund balance of $35,761.79, and he would like to increase line 345 Uniforms by $5,000. That account currently has a deficit balance of $3,426.83. The final internal budget revision request comes from, again, Mr. Gary Wine, Department 717 Central Garage. Mr. Wine would like to decrease line 341 Supplies and Materials by $12,400. That account currently has an unencumbered fund balance of $25,958.54, with 52.3% spent to date, and increase line 216 Insurance and Bonds by $12,400. That account currently has an unencumbered fund balance of $12,354.44.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Anybody have any questions on the 12 internal budget revisions? All right, you have 16 encumbrances.
As the council is aware, last Friday was the deadline for encumbrance requests. I did include the memo that was sent out to all department heads and elected state of May 4th, as well as Policy Number IC11, which is the encumbrance of fund policy. Just as a reminder, an encumbrance is a reservation of budgeted funds out of the current fiscal year for obligations or contracts for goods, materials, or services that have been ordered through the appropriate procurement processes and are expected to be received within a reasonable time not to exceed 60 days. This encumbrance does represent a commitment out of the current fiscal year, but it's not truly an expenditure. The first encumbrance request is one that I've submitted to you out of Account 401. It's a two-part request, and it has to do with your fiscal year 2021 audit. As you know, we had a difficult time getting anyone to bid on our audit because either they were understaffed or we were too big financially, too big and complex for some of the smaller firms to do. We finally got a proposal to do our audit from Perrin Associates, which was just completed two weeks ago. So I'm requesting that you allow me to encumber first $32,750 out of your audit line item. We should be receiving the bill anytime from Perrin Associates. Current unencumbered fund balance in that account is $50,000. And then, as part of our audit, we have to pay the West Virginia State Auditor's Office an 8% audit processing fee, and then based on the $32,750, that fee will be $2,620. Again, that falls well within what we budgeted for the current fiscal year for our audit. The next request is from the County Clerk. Mrs. Malk, Department 402. Mrs. Malk has requested that she be allowed to encumber $8,314 for the preservation of record books, for the preservation of land books. You just approved, or is part of your internal budget revision request, we just moved $8,000 into the record book line item, which gives her a balance of $8,314, which will pay for the, I'm sorry, $8,500, which will pay for the encumbrance of $8,314, since within budget. The second request from Mrs. Malk, she is sending a number of her employees, two employees, to required state auditors' training. She's requesting that, and that training is in June, she's requesting that she be allowed to encumber $500 for the Western, payable to the West Virginia State Auditor's Office. Current unencumbered fund balance is $1,000, with nothing spent to date.
Where's that training at?
Ogilvy, Ogilvy Resort. The second part of that request is she's requesting that she be allowed to encumber $562.44 out of travel, again, for the state auditor's required training to Ogilvy Bay Resort. Current unencumbered fund balance is $1,087.84, with 27.5% spent to date. The next three requests are from the Honorable Virginia Sine Circuit Clerk. Mrs. Sine is requesting that she be allowed to encumber $500 for the Circuit Clerk's Conference, which is being held this week at the Holiday Inn. Current unencumbered fund balance is $4,080.35, with 49% spent to date. The second request is for the West Virginia Association of Councils Meeting, which is being held at the Bavarian Inn. Request from Training and Education is $400. Again, the unencumbered fund balance is $4,080.35, with 49% spent to date. And then the final request from Mrs. Sine is for $12 out of travel, which is to reimburse her for her travel expenses to the West Virginia Association of Counties expense, or West Virginia, West Virginia Association of Counties Meeting. The current unencumbered fund balance in training, or in travel, is $4,561.66. The next four encumbrance requests are for the Tax Office Processing. These are all encumbrances that we typically get from the Tax Department, and they relate to not only the delinquent tax publication, but also the mailings for next year's tax bill. The first request is for Department 409 Advertising and Publications. The encumbrance request is $50,232 for the May 2022 tax delinquent, tax, or delinquent tax publication, which did appear in yesterday's journal. As the council's aware, last week, you did approve an internal budget revision, which increased the unencumbered fund balance to $50,264.80, so there is adequate funding for that bill. The next three requests all are related to the 2022 tax bills. The first request, actually, the next, both requests are for software systems. The first request for software system is for printing, processing, and mailing of the 2022 tax bills. That request is for $17,000. That encumbrance request is for $17,311.10. Current unencumbered fund balance is $24,759.20, with 50% spent to date. And then, again, the second request is for the software systems to do the tax conversion for the 2022 tax bill. That encumbrance request is $2,195.20, again, to be taken out of the unencumbered fund balance of $24,759.20. The final request for Department 409 is from Supplies and Materials. It's for number 10 Envelopes from Specialty Printing in the amount of $1,037.3. Current unencumbered fund balance is $19,306.79, with 22.25% spent to date. The next two requests is for, is for Department 413 Voters Registration, again, submitted by Mrs. Malk. The first request, both requests are for Supplies and Materials. The first request is for Voters Binders from Casco and Harris. The unencumbered fund balance request is for $6,438. Current unencumbered fund balance is $8,515.52, with 87.4% spent to date. The second request, again, is for Supplies and Materials for canvas covers for some of the existing voters' registration binders, again, from Casco and Harris. The amount of that encumbrance is $4,377. And if you'll recall, she did request an internal budget revision of $3,000, which would be added to the Supplies and Materials line item, which would give her adequate funding for both of those encumbrances. The final five encumbrances are from Sheriff Nathan Harmon. The first request from Sheriff Harmon is from Maintenance and Repair Equipment. It's $1,750.50 payable to Molder Roll Solutions for the replacement of battery packs and swivel clips. Current unencumbered fund balance is $10,232.66, with 80.4% spent to date. The next request is for Training and Education, payable to less lethal options for $856. That is for wall banger equipment training. The current unencumbered fund balance is, in Training and Education, is $3,549.82, with 93.7% spent to date. The next request is from Supplies and Materials, payable to Mount near Custom Cartridge in the amount of $25,700. That is for 2,000 rounds of 223R tactical bonded ammunition. Current unencumbered fund balance before the most recent, the most recent internal budget revisions was 20, not $59,567.79, but after deducting the $5,000 and the $12,400 requested by the internal budget revision, there's still adequate funding in Supplies and Materials to fund this encumbrance if the county council so chooses. The next request is for the printing of warning books and accident information exchange books. The vendor is printing impressions in the amount of $1,307.47, which the sheriff requests to take out of telephone. Again, that was part of an internal budget revision that he submitted, increasing the telephone line item by $1,000. telephone line item by one thousand three hundred and eight dollars. So the current, if you, with the internal budget revision, the, the unencumbered fund balance would be one thousand three hundred and eight dollars and six cents, which again would provide adequate funding for that printing. The final request is again Department seven hundred, training and education. The vendor is B S R slash X Store Corporation. The amount of the encumbrance request is twenty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, and that's for drivers' training for eighteen deputies. Again, there was an internal budget revision request that would provide adequate funding in the amount, the total amount available would be twenty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars for that, for that encumbrance request. That's all I got.
You want to drink a water? A gallon of water?
Yeah.
All right. So does anybody have any questions for Mr. Davis on those? I do, Mr. Davis. I know that we talked briefly about the overrun on the seven hundred count on overtime. I know I spoke to the sheriff and stuff and talking about, you know, him infusing that that line item with some of his discretionary fund. And I, I do know that one of the things that I spoke to him about was that we, we, we always said in this county council thing of, you know, prior sheriff wasn't able to keep a full staff, a full roster, and, and that's why they were using so much overtime. However, Sheriff Harmon's done, and, and his department's done a wonderful job in basically recruiting new deputies and stuff. So with doing that, we'd never think about the cost of, and of, of being able to catch up on the training like we have, or he has, and also mandatory, mandatory court dates and hearings that you have to go to, whether you're on shift or not, or the case gets dismissed. So do you, I'm, I'm sure that you and the sheriff has a meeting set up to work through some of that?
We have a meeting at seven AM next Tuesday.
Okay.
However, I will say, and, and I verify this with Sherry, she's in the room, in the absence of infusion from his forfeiture fund or his concealed weapon account, if he would stop spending today, now this includes the encumbrances, if he wouldn't spend, we have just five weeks left of this fiscal year, if he would stop operational spending today, and, and keep in mind, we take care of it, council takes care of all the fuel, so I mean, anything that's related to vehicles and things like that, we're taking care of now. He's got, he's fully staffed with sixty-six deputies. When we look at his salaries, he's right where he needs to be. He's underspending retirement a little bit, or not retirement, underspending health insurance a little bit, because not every deputy has taken the insurance, and not every deputy has been there for a full year. So there's a little bit of wiggle room with, with health insurance, but deputy retirement, salaries, and employer employer C A are, are spot on, within a couple of tenths of a quarter percent. Having said all of that, if we, if he stops spending today, and only, the only thing that came out of Department seven hundred's budget were personnel-related expenses, not including any additional overtime, which we know between now and then, particularly with Memorial Day weekend, there probably will be some additional overtime. Best possible scenario is about a fifty thousand dollar deficit, as, as of right, right now. Again, in the absence of, of, of him putting some additional money in there, which we would have to do through state budget revision.
Right.
So he is aware of it. Again, I'm meeting with him next Tuesday morning at seven AM to see whether we can, we can figure this out.
You and I haven't had this discussion, but Councilperson Gokener brought it up last week a little bit, touched on it a little bit. The, the, the same is that we are seeing from risk pool of forty-eight thousand dollars in workers' comp. Great. We can attribute a lot of that to the sheriff's department?
Um, I, I would think that it was due to me, but.
No, I mean, because of the.
Thank you for the recognition. But no, the, the, we've had just, as you know from our conversation last week, our rate modification factor, we've had a slight swing in that, and, and that's based on the past three years. So yes, is, as, as we get rid of some of the bad years, and we pick up some of the better years, the improvement in our rate modification is directly attributable to the efforts of the sheriff. If, if it's a claim that's medical only, you know, if we have a deputy that goes out here and, and breaks his leg and has to go to, you know, the emergency room in North of Pod, believe it or not, the medical expense really doesn't count towards our adverse claims experience. It's when an employee is off for more than three consecutive days, and they actually start getting into the indemnity portion of our workers' comp, that's what really adversely, is adversely, reflects in our experience. Previous sheriffs would not recognize light duty.
Right.
So if an employee, again, will lose, use the broken leg, if the deputy broke his leg, but he was capable of coming to, into the sheriff's department and do filing or answering the phones, previous sheriffs would not allow that deputy to do that. If they're, if they couldn't be physically on patrol, they were no good to the sheriff. This sheriff has taken a different approach to that with us. He understands the need to get an employee back to work, so he does everything in his power to get an employee back, even if it's on light duty. And to the best of my knowledge, we may have only had one employee, one deputy, that's been off on a lost time claim since the sheriff has been on board. So that, that's a long way of saying, yes, the sheriff has been able to help us.
And his, his defensive driving courses, those type of things, less accidents, less personal injury, those types of things have obviously, and we talked about that early on. One of the other things that we talked about, and you and I had this conversation last week, about, about a year ago, we had a conversation that the sheriff said he was willing to put some forfeiture funds into the overtime to help fund the overtime. And do we know if there has been any deposits into that account? So if.
Yes, we do know, and no, there has not been.
That's what I was saying.
Yes, we do know.
What kind of answers that?
Because that could only have been done by, through the council, through state budget revision. So what he would have to do is write a check out of that account, it would have to be deposited, and we would have to recognize that as state budget revision and put it into departments, into the general file.
So I think it's careless for us to, I, I mean, if we're talking about being fifty thousand dollars over by the end of the year, I think it's careless for us to approve these encumbrances at this time, at, at least until you have a conversation and figure out some type of solution.
And I had spoke with the sheriff a couple of weeks ago about his budget, and I told him, look, you know, the code says we cannot tell you how to spend your money, but you need to live within your budget. And that, in fact, may not be his strongest attribute that he has, okay? Maybe it is, but, but perhaps it's not. And I strongly encouraged him to get with Mr. Davis, who knows where every penny is in this budget, and I just strongly suggested that he sit down with, with Alan and take some advice on how to maneuver some of this traffic in his budget. But, you know, with his training, you know, he, he not only comes from a law enforcement background, but he also comes from a training background, where the, the training that he is doing will, in fact, pay dividends at some point. You know, last week they had a communication training to be able to de-escalate a situation before it came, became traumatic, you know, which, and when that happens, we know there's liability involved. So I, I know that he's taking a lot of steps to not only better train his workforce, but to also, in the long term, reduce the liability of the county.
And, and we're trying to do as much, and I'm glad Councilperson Gokener mentioned the de-escalation training, we're, we're trying to help the sheriff out as much as possible with this training. That de-escalation training was actually done under, under the umbrella of that big Department of Justice grant that, that the council approved sometime. In fact, I got an invoice for that on my desk with about a twenty-three thousand dollars, which includes not only the sheriff's department, but central dispatch and emergency communications employees and, and our twenty-two Berkeley career firefighters. So, I mean, I, I understand the need for, for training, because under previous sheriffs, it was, it was kind of hit and miss. The, the twenty-five thousand seven hundred dollars from out there custom cartridge, it's my understanding that that ammunition is, will be delivered anytime soon. In fact, we have the, we have the invoice for that. So I mean, we, we're, we're on the hook for that. The Mole Roll Solution seventeen fifty, the less lethal options training, if you will recall, some time ago, you authorized, you declared some of the, some of the shotguns that we had as, as surplus. We sold those as surplus and used some of that money to buy, buy less lethal weapons, the ones that shoot the, the bean bags. So this is training in support of, of that less lethal equipment, printing impressions. You know, that's pretty, you, it's one thousand three hundred and seven dollars, it's not, it's not a lot. The, the only one that I really question is the, the driving training in the amount of twenty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Is, is that really, is that something that needs to come out of this year's budget? I, I don't know, and I, I can have that conversation with the sheriff next Tuesday. I think we're on the hook for the, for the ammo, and that's something that was previously.
Well, we've already received invoice for it.
We've got the invoice.
Why are we encumbering it?
Well, it, it.
Because the.
We, we got the encumbrance before we got the invoice.
Okay.
And it depends on how quickly, you know, Sherry and her staff are really, really good, as soon as you approve it, you getting it out. So it won't be, the encumbrance will, will show up on, or the invoice will show up on next, next week's in, purchase order log. Sometimes we don't know, it, it's really, you know, when the invoices will come, you know, how quickly the services will be provided, and things like that.
Think, um, the, the training that you just talked about to de-escalate and stuff like that, even though that stuff with the grant, did that also cover overtime? It was just the.
Oh, no. That's just training.
So.
Yeah, that's just the cost of the instructor.
Right. So all the, all the, the time on these trainings and stuff like that. And then we had a, we had a situation last week that probably required a huge amount of overtime, right?
We did.
That, that's not, that's the.
That was that incident? That's Operation Spring.
That's, that stuff, the, the couple of things that we can't plan for, it's on the public safety side, is how many fires we're gonna have, how many ambulance calls we're gonna have, and how many people in uniformed off, you know, uniformed officers, and it's really hard.
I don't know if I, I don't know if I agree with that statement, Doug, because we do, when we look at, when we look at budgets, we look at, we, we have those discussions and say, you know, this is, this is generally what's expended, you could have overruns, these type of things, and, and we look at, we look at overruns in those areas for unexpected things.
Well, I think, and I'm just, I'm just having a good discussion.
Yeah.
I think one of the things that, that we have to think about, the very first week that the sheriff was here, there was the, the, the thing that we have with the shooting, you know, with the, the bikers and stuff. That's what I'm talking about.
No, I get it.
Things that can't, you can't, can't predict those things. You know, like your, your hazmat calls on eighty-one, you know, during construction, you know, you said that turn it off, you don't know exactly how many's coming, you know, hopefully, you know, majority of them, but do you always need every one of them? No, but because we didn't know who's coming. And then we were out there so often, you know, for fuels bills in particular, I mean, it, of course, I mean, the, we were able to bill for some of that, to get the money back and, you know, it's, you know, put back into that account, but you, it's, it's very difficult to plan those situations.
But there is parts of overtime that can be planned, and you can look at those and say, you know, our, the, the budget, the budget doesn't have this much in it, and we are running over because of, you know, incidents, so maybe we don't do these things like you're talking about, the, you know, the, the defensive driving, that type of thing. So, I mean, there is parts of this that can be planned, and that's, you know, that's not up to us to plan, that's up to the sheriff to plan.
The sheriff just walked in, you want to help us out here, sheriff?
Yeah, sure. I, I caught motion with you. As you hinted onto, the start of my very first year was pretty interesting, and you can't predict those. I mean, we recently had two shootings involving two deaths in a matter of two weeks that, that needed to be worked in, and they were resolved. Dr. mentioned the road rage incident, the guy breaking out a sawed-off shotgun on the side of the interstate, shooting him, and we had to track him all the way down, caught him in Pennsylvania. There's very odd spike of violence that none of us can predict.
Well, we also had the situation last week that you was able to track down the person, I think, from the school.
Yes, sir. Yeah, and so there, there's been some anomalies in terms of things I'm not quite used to investigating that, that you wouldn't think would be in Berkeley County, West Virginia, they are. Some of the overages is, at the time, I was not aware that our communications grant did not suffice for overtime, and when we talk about how much diversity and verbal deconfliction and that kind of training is needed, especially with the national atmosphere with law enforcement. Anyway, so, so it's almost, it most likely will be mandatory to have that kind of training, but at least I can proudly say that we do have that part of our health and wellness program. But I never, I never counted, and I guess my fault for assuming that the grant also paid for that overtime, for when you talk about midnight shift deputies having to come in and attend this necessary needed class, that, that can pay for four hours each overtime. I just found out, uh, last week from Ms. Gillis. I'm going to pay a lot closer attention to that moving forward. You have three additional K nine units that, on an average, three and a half hours a week in overtime just for maintenance and care of their dog. So you're looking at easily seven hours per K nine, times three more, by total, that is, is showing that increase as well. Wasn't quite prepared to hear that the grant reimbursements that we had paid for and whatnot really doesn't get reimbursable until, like Penny said, some, three or four months down the road. I wasn't ready for that. I thought that would happen a little bit more efficiently, but.
Well, I, I know you and Alan are. Well, I I I know you and Alan are going to meet here shortly to try to work some things out. And right now, we're trying to get through the encumbrances and you've 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 said multiple times about throwing in some seizure money and stuff like that to help out. And we're we recognize the savings from the risk pool of of workers' comp, which hugely, a lot of that is 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 based on your mindset of the training side of it, also the um getting people back to work on on light duty and things like that has made a big difference.
I will I will say this real quick, the the original encumbrances that we sent to Alan, there was a contract of 20 upwards of $22,000. That is the incorrect contract. That was for practical vehicle intervention. We're not even looking at that until the the my command staff made a mistake and plugged that number in. That the I want to finish the driver's training. That would be the only encumbrance, and that is between $9,000 and $18,000. Eighteen if you did them back to back, but nine thousand if you just did one class.
All right, so so wait a second now. All right, right now, you have Motorola Solutions for batteries and clips.
You have. Something about 22950, is that what you're talking about, Sheriff?
Yes, sir. Should be at the bottom.
Okay, so 22950, you're saying you can go down.
That's an incorrect number.
Okay. What's it should be, what should it be?
They were anticipating running back-to-back driving classes to finish up what I wanted to do originally on the driving which would be $9,000 per class. When they did them back-to-back, it would be $18,000 contractually. I don't see the need to rush into it, so roughly $9,000.
$9,000 for this year encumbrance?
Yes, sir.
The 22, uh, or nine? So Sheriff, I want to make clear that I think you get your 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 people are doing an amazing job. I think, you know, I I look at some of the situation like Doug was just talking about, about the incident you have out on 81, those type of things. And we didn't have that, we didn't have that patrol happening in the past, and now we have it, and you're going to have those type of things. My my concern, my concern is that that that's continued to run over. We knew it was going to continue to run over when we had the conversation several months back about you being able to infuse that with some of that forfeiture money. So I I mean, it's doing exactly what we thought it was going to do a year ago when we when we had these conversations or eleven months ago. And um, I I just, you know, I think it's important that we stay within our means.
Yeah, I do too.
And if not, if not, if we're looking at it down the road, then we, you know, six months in or or nine months in, instead of the, you know, eleven months in, we're looking at it and saying, hey, we we got these things we want to do, you know? Do we want to keep doing them, or do we want to cut back and and try to stay within the budget? And and at least at that point, then the council has an opportunity early on to make that decision and say, yeah, we will try to find some money to be able to keep doing those things.
And and you know, you you we have the recent active shooter event that just occurred Tuesday.
I get it.
God forbid that ever would have happened here, but it does bring light to the fact of the necessary training where our folks need to be in these schools, giving these presentations, to making sure our educators are ready and prepared for emergencies just like this. And and of course, how that transpires in terms of reporting, I've got meetings scheduled with Mr. Stevens, Senator Rucker, and other folks to sit down at the table and discuss these things. So, you know, coming in, I knew it was going to be a hard year because we're playing catch-up. And I bring that point up because I had act former active shooter instructors that had expired certification. I gotta, I gotta, I have to get those back up where they need to be. So that's one of many reasons why, you know, I knew that there was going to be a lot of pro come this year.
Well, you just touched on some, Sheriff, when you and I spoke, you said that some of your, you're gonna start bringing some of that training in-house.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
To save money and.
Yes.
That's, but you had to get back up to the point where you could do that.
Yes. So I I look at the overall operating portions of this. There's going to be, like Mr. Delia had mentioned earlier in my budget presentation, he wants to see reoccurring costs. That'll be as minimal as possible uh this coming year. So you'll you'll definitely get to see that because now we are where we need to be.
All right. So you and Alan is both in the room right now. Your meeting coming up this coming week.
Next Tuesday.
It's, you're in agreement that, hey, you're willing to put money in? And we got to meet somewhere in the middle.
Yes, I can't, I can't necessarily do the forfeiture that I'm looking at from. This forfeiture, there's only two ways I can use that.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. And um the one, the one thing that that I've talked to Sheriff about, and we we just got to be careful because we got to, you know, we get all the every year, we haven't had no no um blemishes uh on any of the audits for the last three years. And we got to continue to do our job the same as you got to continue to do your job. And I I think this, I know that I can safely say, and I'm sure that the whole council says it, what you and the chief has gotten done in a in a year or less is something that I thought would take four years to do, so. And along with that, it costs money, so I decided, so, but anyway. I I think the, you you all want to talk about the encumbrances and vote on that separately instead of doing it? Or um, because I'm I'm okay.
Honestly, we have no choice if one of them is wrong.
Well, I'm okay with everything with the correction of $9,000 uh on the BSR instead of the 22950, knowing that we're going to get through um this uh next week with Mr. Davis. And also, I will say that, you know, sometime in the very near future after that meeting, if you and Mr. Davis need to sit down and talk about next year, make sure we're okay there. But um entertain a motion on the encumbrances with the correction of $9,000 instead of 22950 to BSR. If that's what you all want to.
So moved.
Have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Second, any discussion, more discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Thank you.
Sheriff, I just want you to know, I'm not being critical of of you. My obligation goes to this council because at the end of the day, they're the ones that are personally responsible for the budget. So I I will always, always, always make them aware of my concern.
Yeah.
I understand.
All right, thank you.
I I think all of us are very appreciative of everything you do. Absolutely.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Thanks for coming over. All right, we have change of status, new hire recommendation received from Michael Winthrow, 4H agent for Bernadette Wallen as an administrative assistant with an annual salary of $27,265 effective May 30th, 2022. New hire recommendation received from Tim Zio, Director of Community Correction for the following, Jessica Lan- London as a peer recovery coach with an annual salary of $37,509 effective June 1st, 2022. Robert Nguyen as a QRT peer recovery coach with an annual salary of $37,509 effective May 31st, 2022. New hire recommendation received from Mike Lang, Chief Court Marshal for Andrew J. Noler as a building custodian with an annual salary of $27,265 effective June 2nd, 2022. New hire recommendation received from the Honorable Elaine Malt County Clerk for Lindsay Zigafus as a deputy clerk uh with an annual salary of $31,000 effective June 1st, 2022. Change of status received from Tim Zio, Director of Community Corrections for Patricia Nicole Prentice. She is going from peer recovery coach to therapist one with a salary increase from $37,509 to $47,776 effective June 1st, 2022. Change of status received from Mike Lang, Chief Court Marshal for John Carbaugh. He received instructor certification for flashbangs. His salary will will increase from $36,372 to $36,872 effective June 1st, 2022. Letter of resignation received from Facilities for William Polk effective June 1st, 2022. Letter of resignation received from the Recovery Resource Center for Crystal Miller effective May 31st, 2022. Any questions on those?
Mr. President, if I may, just um, just as a clarification, Mr. Polk's instead of resignation, it's actually retirement. He is retired. And his replacement in the Data Report Center, Andrew Nol- Noler, he's actually um a graduate of the Data Report Center program and has been working there part-time, funded through Workforce West Virginia. And when he becomes full-time for for some period, they're they'll be paying half of his his wages.
Okay.
So it's it's.
It's a win-win.
Kind of win-win for everyone. And, you know, he's been doing the job for a while and has 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 done a really good job for for the DRC.
Great. Primal menace, everyone was present for May 12th, 2022. Any changes or corrections on those? We got the county council calendar. All right, be closed on Monday for Memorial Day. And then boards and commissions, we have ambulance authority for 5:00 PM tonight here in the chamber, library, 5:00 PM. And nothing on boards and commissions for the first three days of June. Any change or corrections for those? We have a bond release for Brookside Section 1, BCP file number 69-05, LOC number 5390992-47. Engineering department has made that recommendation. Questions or concerns for Fran or Doug on that? We have a bond reduction for BTM Office Building 5462, Way's Port Pike. BCP file number 055-19 tied to BCP 2008-0057 grading and BCP 2112-451, LOC number is 6003298. Engineering department has made that recommendation. Any concern with that one? We have a canceled check request from County Clerk's office, filet's office. Any questions on that? Entertained a motion to approve the consent agenda.
It's removed.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Can I ask a question first?
Sure.
Uh, well, go ahead. I'll second it for just for conversation.
All right.
I I built the uh BTM Office Building. Should we pull that out and do that separate so that I can recuse myself in that?
Absolutely. All right, entertain this motion that we have in a second will be for the consent agenda. Not including the bond reduction for BTM, and naturally, we already voted on the encumbrance. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Now, Mr. Delia, if you want to recuse yourself of walkout room, we'll do the bond reduction for BTM. Entertain a motion to do the bond reduction for BTM as I've already read the numbers. Motion been made in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. We want to leave you out there. You want to catch it? There were time to tell me to leave you out there, but I.
About an half time anyway, I couldn't wait no more.
Morning, Mr. Hess. You have a little bit activity to it for seven personal property tax exemptions and one real estate. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
We do have uh seven personal property office error exemptions that rank to approval today. For those reasons, that's listed, they total up to $603.95.
All right, entertain a motion on seven personal property tax exemption due to officer error.
So moved.
Have a motion on floor in a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries and one real estate.
Good, thank you. Now, we do have one real estate exoneration for Jose Corona. And for some reason, we got the wrong sketch. House just gets the different houses sketched on his property to get brought up for the one that back here. Uh, for, we have $350 in recognized assets.
All right, we have one uh real estate uh tax exoneration due to officer.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made to approve that. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Board and meeting reports, Mr. Barnhart.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I had a Berkeley Morgan County Board of Health and Medicine, beautiful sunny downtown, Berkeley Springs, West Virginia.
Did you wear your outfit from last week?
No.
No, okay. Did you take a bath in George Washington's tongue?
No, I didn't. Not this time, maybe next time. Meeting was mostly in uh departmental reports. The EPA report, COVID is going up slightly. They adopted the fees for service rescheduling. Reinspection fees are going up to $125. And the $20 research fee for clinics. The budget was adopted, $1.91 million.
1.9?
And they have re-adopted the chain of command because Bob Bill, the administrator for.
Dave.
And Dave even resigned.
No, he wasn't the only one to write letter that time. You weren't the only one to write letters starting with the name, Bob Bill.
Yeah, something like that. And that was my name.
All right, thank you, Tim. Mr. Delia.
I had a couple of meetings yesterday. The um CBB had uh had, they had a conversation about um about a uh a request for a grant which is um is a to be used as a building to be used as a um a building grant, which construction grants really aren't under what the CBB does. They actually had a deep conversation about whether or not to try to create something to be able to do that in the future. And then, you know, whether it muddies the waters of what the uh what the mission of the CBB actually is. And they they voted it down to not get into that part of it. They thought it was best to be um in promoting new events and and new things that are going to um bring people into an area as opposed to helping to create something that eventually.
So is it a something, is it a grant that they have to apply for, or is it a grant that they have to?
Yeah, it's a grant they issue. So the CBB issues. Yeah, grants up to $10,000, five to $10,000 grants for, and they've issued several of them for uh marketing grants where they market. If it's a startup like uh Main Street Martinsburg wanted to create a new event to bring people to downtown. And that was the food truck event. And they had, they had applied for a $5,000 grant from the CBB to start that up. Will never be able to get another grant for it, but it was that initial, the process to create initially is what they uh what they applied for. So that's that's all about the CBB meeting, and then I had. And then I had a, um, had a senior services meeting. There was a lot of conversation about, um, about creating a new funding source. Um, the funding, the, the way the senior services employees are paid is by reimbursement, um, from the state on certain levels. But the same thing that we talked about, about, uh, locality pay is a problem that they have to retain people. They don't get enough reimbursement to be able to do it. So the thought process is to try to find another, um, reoccurring revenue source and, uh, started the, uh, a lengthy conversation about bingo. Years ago, they did bingo there and, um, and evidently brought in some revenue. For one reason or another, they, they stopped doing it. And so, um, had a conversation, uh, about that.
They, they probably lost out on all their fundraisers that they've had over the years during COVID stuff.
Um, they, they did.
Yeah.
They did. But they, they, um, they received some additional funding from some other sources and, and, uh, I think the, uh, the thought process is that, you know, they're very fortunate for everything that the county does and they hate to, um, they hate to be holding their hand out all the time, especially when we supply the building and the maintenance and, you know, all of the, all the things that's happening right now at Senior Services with the, with the new flooring, um, going in and, you know, the reconstruction on the whole exterior of the building, the roof, the H V A. C. Systems. We've spent a lot of money in.
We have a wheelchair race going down Main Street.
You and the, you and the mayor?
Yeah.
They have an obstacle course in wheelchair.
There you go.
They did have a bid race. About twenty-five years ago, they had a bid race.
I remember that.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Something like, you know, something fun to watch. Do it, what, during the, you know?
So, so the conversation was that, you know, maybe there's a way, um, the conversation kind of went that maybe there's a way that the senior services could partner with some of the fire departments and do some bingos that way and try to put some together. So I had, uh, I had indicated that I would try to, um, get some, uh, get the fire department contact information so that, um, so that they can maybe reach out and start that conversation and see if there's a possibility of, um, working that, working that side of it. Well, I like the wheelchair race. That's a good idea.
Wheelchair, bed race.
Okay.
I'd be yours.
Haven't had a soapbox derby here for a while, have they?
Haven't had that. I only know where my.
It's coming? Good.
Only know where my car is. Wasn't Rosemont, I don't know where it is now. All right, Mr. Whitaker.
Now I have no meetings to report on.
All right. Mr. Go can I?
Uh, yes, sir. Landmarks, uh, met. And, um, number one, they're very appreciative of the new meeting place. It was very nice and, uh, it's a, a nice location for that. Uh, there was a conversation about we built. Uh, Mr. Mann was there, who is the, the current owner. Um, it's really a lot of concerns over the wallpaper and the foyer in particular. That's really deteriorating. So we're checking, uh.
Is that a historical work?
Well, it's, it's old, but it's not original to the house. Uh, it was applied several years later, but then, uh, during one of the, uh, filmings, there, there was a, a clear, I don't know, satin finish or something of that nature put over it. Uh, and it's apparently been shrinking and it's become very brittle. So he would, he would like to have the ability to cover it over, which would actually probably preserve what's there, but so it looks more aesthetically.
Cover it over?
Covered over with, with drywall with a space in between the wallpaper and, and he's working with different historical groups to be able to do that correctly. Um, the, the second story foyer, uh, area, it's, it's okay. It was not messed with. Uh, and I'm sure between him owning it and not, you know, the heat on, not off, humidity not being, you know, it's all plagued, uh, that wallpaper. So we did not want to give him permission to do that until we had the opportunity to reach out to council, um, about what we can do, what we can't do, give him permission to do.
The, the clear finish is probably the biggest problem, putting that on, on top of it. And it drying over the years and, I mean, that, that, that's exactly what it does. It, it cracks and.
Yeah, and it's really deteriorating badly.
Yeah.
So, um, and like I say, it is not original to the building, even though it, it has been there a very, very long time.
There's not some pressure sensitive or something that you can put on? I know I did a, a historic restoration several years back and we, uh, we put concrete over, um, some tile floors, some mosaic tile floors that were damaged beyond repair, but we were allowed to, um, we were allowed to put a, a product over top of that that would allow someone in the future to be able to pull back off and restore it without bonding to it. Um, and we got the, um, we got the okay, um, from, uh, from the, um, I guess it was a state historic, um, that does the grants or the, the, I, I, is it grants? It's tax, uh, uh, tax, what do they call it? Re.
Tax credits.
Tax credits. Yeah. The, the state historic that did the tax credits, they had that information for us, what we could use to be able to fall under that criteria, the state and the federal.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe able to find something through that.
Yeah. I'm, I'm not sure. He, he is working with, uh, some restoration experts to be able to do it correctly.
I'll see, I'll see Jonathan this weekend. I'll say something to him.
Yeah. Yeah, they have a big weekend planned, uh, this week with the live fest.
Right.
With Main Street.
Still looking for volunteers, by the way.
I heard that. Um, uh, had a Parks and Rec Facilities Subcommittee, uh, basically the overall care and, uh, has some complaints over the roadway down at the soccer field at Dupont. Uh, that's been addressed. Also some mowing issues that, that's been addressed. Uh, the park, you know, is trying to get them up and running for Memorial Day weekend, you know, which is this weekend. So War Memorial will be ready to go. The, the pool and everything will be ready. Lambert, I don't think is going to make it. They've, they've been trying to do the liner. Uh, of course, they've had a limited amount of staff from this corporation that came in to do it. And the weather has also hampered them. I don't think they want to make that. Also had a master plan meeting, uh, this week. Uh, we're basically, uh, Lake Thomas and Port House Farm Park and Sportsman's Paradise where the conversation, most of the conversation of where the efforts and the, uh, uh, direction to go. Uh, there is a meeting scheduled for June the twenty-eighth and I'd, I'd like to have you there, share your vision with, uh, Sportsman's Paradise in particular.
What's the conversation on that?
Well, they're looking at being able to tie all that in with the, the walking park, uh, coming up through Oatsdale, uh, swinging over to, uh, Lake Thomas and back out to War Memorial Park. So it's, it's all part of that.
Linear trail.
Linear trail, uh, process that the city has shown some interest in, um, allowing that to happen and get that area cleaned up.
Isn't Lake Thomas a backup for the city water supply?
Yeah, I don't think that it is.
It used to be.
It was at one time. I don't think it is now.
I think it's more used, um, that's, uh, actually a lot of drainage from the city goes into.
Hey, I mean, it's all fenced off.
Well, and that's it. Uh, the stormwater management that's being created from the mill complex is, is going to be directed to that area as well. And there's concerns of liability.
Yeah, that would make a lot available for water supply if that's.
Yeah.
But, yeah, you're still going to fence it off.
Well, it, it is currently all fenced.
Yeah.
Uh, but they're just looking at some different thoughts and different designs to be able to open that area up.
I think the, yeah, the thought is to try to see if they can make public access for it to be actually used.
Yeah, you, it's, it's ground level in one area.
Yeah.
Down by the mains.
Yeah, that north end, it's.
It makes a good diving class off the other side on the west side.
You had a competition.
Yeah.
I don't know that that's going to be a thing.
That's a good idea.
Um, I had the pleasure, uh, to have attended the Circuit Clerk's Conference, uh, where our honorable Virginia Sein was honored, uh, for her many years and her leadership in that, uh, field. She's, she's a very well-loved lady in that, um, world of circuit clerks. She's well-known and much respected.
Twenty-nine years of circuit clerk, fifty-seven years of being a county employee.
Yeah.
Tell her I was still in diapers probably when she started.
Yeah. And then Saturday.
She didn't like that too much.
Saturday, I went with Matt and met with Randall Reed and, and his staff. We went to the roundhouse where they're looking at trying to perhaps design or the thought process of, uh, the, uh.
Yeah.
An out, an outdoor event, um, to be able to.
Still look like a market, right?
And the market on the other end. Yeah, but only like on the south end of the roundhouse, that area, like a amphitheater type of.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Uh, event there.
Kind of a conceptual drawing of that.
Yes, sir. Uh, and which they're very interested in.
Trains can be a little bit of a base and, and, uh, symbols on that for a band, right?
Could be.
Get the, get that rhythm going.
Yeah.
And, and also had the opportunity to take his staff up to the museum, uh, building at, at one-ten. Like to look at the thought process there. So, um, they're, they're very pleased with the movement that's going on here. They, they have limited funds, you know, but.
We'll take them on.
Well.
I think we know that Randall's fighting for us.
He is. And, and I think we're going to be seeing him at probably once a month up here.
That's good.
So he's, he's developing some real good relationships and of course.
Yeah.
He's, he's a hard worker, of course.
Oh, absolutely. And that, that relationship was created by the hard worker madam.
Absolutely. And you.
The, um, um, I don't have any board meeting reports, uh, other than, uh, uh, created the, uh, Circuit Clerk's, uh, Conference, uh, this week earlier for Miss Sein and, um, good turnout there. At this time though, I've been talking to Eddie about, um, the Development Authority appointment for me as being the liaison. And I, they, they just meet in the morning, early afternoon and, and if I can't do it any justice of making sure that I'm there consistently, I feel that I'm not doing it any good. So I talked to Eddie about, um, if he would be interested in taking over that, that board position as a liaison for Development Authority. And he said he would be. So at this time, if no one has any objections, I would like to do that. So I don't know if that needs a motion, Mr. Davis or Anthony, or whether that's just.
I'll make a motion that Eddie be pointing to the liaison. It's not.
Okay. So we have a motion on floor, a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Can we send a letter to Doug and thank him for his services?
I figured I'd better resign before y'all kick me off. But, um, yeah, I told Eddie, you know, being the president, if he needs me, I'll be around, but, um, we'll attend any of the meetings because then Eddie and Dan will be doing that. Um, so any, uh, action on board and commission vacancies at this time?
Um, I see where there's a letter from the Fire Association.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, for the appointment of Dave Browning to the nine-one-one advisory.
Uh-huh.
Commission. I'd like to make that appointment.
Now we have, okay. All right.
Is that appropriate?
No, no, that is appropriate. Yeah, I was just thinking Marty sets on that too, but I'm thinking.
Yeah, Dave was representing the volunteers.
Right. Exactly. Have a motion on floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Any other activity? We've got quite a list here. Do you want to go ahead through them or?
Most of them, they only experiment with meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not prepared for the Eastern Panhandle.
Okay.
Development Council, because I have one member.
All right.
Dean McGolfe hasn't responded yet. Dean McGolfe. They have, we had. It wasn't one of them.
Many of those are development authorities, so we thought maybe.
Right. Give Eddie some time to digest that.
We need to.
The only one you could do on Development Authority would be Mayor Knowles. I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
We'd make that motion.
All right. So we have a motion on floor, uh, Florida appoint Mayor Knowles back onto Development Authority. Was that the second? Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. All right.
Do you have any?
I'm sorry.
Do you have any fashion proceedings?
Sure. Oh, I see it now. All right. All right. Any other? Is that it? All right. Moving on to Brian Ross, Director of Division of Community Development. Doug Smith, County Engineer, update on Department of Highways Procedure.
There was some time ago, have it, um, Brian and Doug went to a meeting, like, has updates of some process changes with the vision.
Actually, John, your junior.
And I just thought it would be beneficial because I know this council has an interest in infrastructure, particularly highways, for them to give you some updates on.
All right.
What's going on?
Yeah, this, this three-day conference took place approximately five weeks ago. I sent both our county engineers to the D O. H. Conference up in Cape Town Valley. Um, the two primary purposes of this was, one, continuing education for their P E. And also to establish or strengthen current relationships with D O. H. Because we are in current, you know, communication with them, considering everything that's going on in the county and the concerns that we have from the public due to infrastructure. Um, Doug's going to take the next couple of minutes and basically explain to you some highlights and facts that he gathered from that meeting.
Hi, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Basically, the conference was put on by the local technical assistant program, which is funded by Western Union University, uh, Fed Highway and Western Union D O. H. Um, also there, um, the conference was not as much technical as it was more transportation planning, uh, which was really sponsored by the Metropolitan Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is also sponsored by W D. U., D O. H. and, um, Fed Highway. Uh, it was a lot of planning. They did talk a lot about the state, state grants, obviously. I think in every one of the conferences I was in, no matter what it was, uh, the state grants angle was certainly there and it was present. Um, a couple of the key facts that I really, that I took away from it.
Doug, state grants to apply, you mean for people to apply for?
Right. In other words, the metropolitan organizations, i.e. we, we aren't one, but say the city of Martinsburg, Shepherdstown.
Okay.
Those sort of places.
I got you.
They were going through D O. H. To capture the plans, um, the, the grants, sorry.
Because they have roads in there under.
Right. Now, like Shepherdstown, the new, the new, um, streetscape project that they have from the signal back to, uh, the firehouse there, they're actually going to annex that road back from D O. H. And they're, they were awarded their grant. They are starting on that. And there, I did attend a complete design conference on that as to what they did. Um, there, but most of the presentations in there were, were targeted along those lines. Uh, we, we all, we aren't one of those, but certainly we could partner with one of the cities within our county to, to do something like that. Um, a lot of the conferences that I chose to go to were more applicable to what the things that we. We aren't one of those, but certainly we could partner with one of the cities within our county to do something like that. A lot of the conferences that I chose to go to were more applicable to what the things that we would see on a normal basis here is in our design reviews, which was a lot of traffic calming, traffic control, traffic management, those sort of items that could be put to use for the citizens of Berkeley County and the things that we review every day. So I guess one of the things that really caught us, and I wanted to take, you know, a minute to go over, was this came out as part of the traffic calming, crosswalk safety, pedestrian-type designs. And one of the things that they come up with is before COVID, the year before COVID, there were basically thirty-six thousand fatalities that year. Of those thirty-six thousand fatalities, there were six thousand pedestrian fatalities after COVID this year. They are upwardly projecting forty-eight thousand fatalities this year.
More people out.
Well, during COVID, when the roads weren't crowded, they were open, people felt safe on them, speeds increased. Also, there were more people out walking. The two do not work together. So basically, there has been a big push, and you've seen this from the FHWA and USDOT grants. You know, they're giving you grants, you know, it's no longer, it's no longer okay to say, "Give me money, my street's over capacity." Now, they want you to say, "Your street's over capacity and you're going to do traffic calming, bike paths, pedestrian safety upgrades." You see where that's going. A lot of it, you see the word inclusivity and connectivity used in all these traffic studies. It's not just the same anymore to study the street that's congested. They want corridors studied into those streets, what can be done. One of the things that I did see, and it was a little bit new to me, it wasn't my technology as a traffic engineer, but they are using smart signals. And some people say, "Well, gee, that newfangled technology, it just never works." Well, PennDOT was there. PennDOT had a presentation on this, and actually, they put the signal in, in a congested street. It did not solve everything, but it certainly helped. And they went back a year later, they redid the traffic study, and the smart signal basically adjusts itself as to what timings are needed based on the congestion arriving at that trebler.
So does that smart signal have indicators on the roads to, it will actually measure the.
Yes.
Traffic?
It'll measure, it'll measure what's queued, it'll measure the speed that queue empties, and it's measuring that cycle, and it's able to adjust itself around the intersection.
Right.
You know, and it, I think the city of Hagerstown has one that's going in or is in. The one in Pennsylvania that they presented, they actually came up with it, they put it in, and then they went back and studied it and showed that it wasn't an end-all, to-be-all, but it was a help for the corridor feeding into the worst areas of congestion. So it's, you know, it was something certainly to keep in our hip pocket around here, knowing the intersections that we have on 11, that most of them fail. It's certainly something, you know, to look at in the traffic studies and say, gee, is there, you know, is there a better mousetrap?
Was there any discussion about, I noticed in Pennsylvania, because I've been there a few times, that they had signs that's called "Stay out of the box." And when you turn, you have your access to make your left-hand turns with your arrow. And if you get caught in that box because of traffic congestion or another light has changed, there's a car right there ready to write you a ticket.
They didn't really speak too much about that, but what, there was one concept that was a little bit hard. I, not saying that I disagree with it, I mean, it certainly is a concept, but it was questionable. The calm streets, they were really talking about narrowing streets, adding the bike lane, forcing parking on the street. If drivers, if drivers see an open road, excuse me, if drivers see an open road, they feel comfortable, so they increase speed. If it's more congested, they're more apt to pay attention and slow down. That was a concept that there was presented by PennDOT. You know, there were also mid-block medias presented, there was also closing off through intersections to try to get people to take, you know, different things like that. There are a lot of things that we hear about at a planning commission from the citizens. And there were several little ideas and tricks that, a half a roundabout for a T-intersection was one of probably the neatest ideas that I had seen. To calm traffic and stop that T-person from blowing the stop sign. When, you know, we all know that, you know, a four-way intersection, after a certain amount of time, people ignore it. They do the California roll when they're through. So there were other things that they were presenting there. I think one of the most interesting ones came from PennDOT, which was they, a year ago, they had done a speed study on the turnpike in the eighty-fifth percentile speed, not the high speed. The eighty-fifth speed or eighty-fifth average speed on the highway, they had to bump, which is what we set our speed limits to. They bumped the interstate to seventy. They went back a year later and did another speed study. Speeds went up again. This is just, this was a few months ago. So what did they do? Were you going to go up past seventy? But the speeds are increasing, it has increased, and people have not slowed down. And when you mix the two with, you know, biking, pedestrian traffic, you know, it can be a recipe for disaster. So there was a lot of, you know, they were really pushing us as engineers to, when you're planning those intersections or those developments, those sort of things, to look towards, you know, all users of the road. Did they show that people are outside now? COVID moved people from indoors to outdoors. They want the outdoor activities. A couple of things for like the mountain trails, like the Cape and Bike Trail, Mountain Bike Trail and everything that they have spent quite a lot of effort on up there. People want that. They want that experience, and they're willing to do what they need to do to get that experience. So that was another big thing about including bike trails, pathways, walking trails, not just for the bike person, but for the accessible person as well. So there was definitely a lot of, it was a very good conference. There was a lot of good little tidbits. I could go on and on. Like I said, a lot of it we brought back really was where I am with it is the pedestrian, pedestrian traffic and, you know, kind of trying to consider how we bring in bike paths and things like that. There's certainly the one, and like I said, from the federal highway DOT's perspective at the federal level, they see that as an absolute necessary, just like the charging stations. I sat through a conference on that, and there's a lot of grant money coming down for that.
What about, what about semi-parking? Did they talk anything about that?
No, not a, not a lot.
Because they are getting all over the interstate.
Yes.
On the shoulders. Every spot they can find, they're going. And I know at one time, they were talking about semi-parking with smart stations, not smart stations, but stations where they can plug into.
Without having to idle.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
You'd be paying for a service hooked up to your window.
Almost like a campsite.
Yep.
Well, and that's what we were talking about with the EV charger bills. I didn't know that the state actually got money as part of the settlement from Volkswagen. I didn't know that, and they're, but that grant money was for a specific type of charging station. It's not equivalent to everything that you plug into charge. So they were trying to figure out, can they double that money? They were trying to figure out a way to basically maximize every penny of that grant that, or payout or something, however you want to say it. You know, make that work for them and where the charging station would go. But I think they were looking at more of a private vendor situation to come in and, you know, set those stations up for them. And basically, the state, you know, gets, I guess, would be a small profit off of that.
One of the things I've noticed down in Frederick County, Virginia, is anytime they're doing a road improvement, that they are putting a rash strip between the road and the combination bike and walking.
Yes.
Path. And that path is eight feet wide.
Yes.
Or maybe even wider.
Yes.
So it makes it really easy for you to ride your bike anywhere you want to go.
Right.
Not have to worry about traffic.
And that is, I mean, you know, I think, you know, as we see more people move into the community, that those sort of things like that become important because I think the places where they came from, most of the time, they had that. And they, to some degree, expect that. So there was a lot of, you know, I know the big, the bike path there for Shepherdstown for their Streetscape improvement was a big deal. They had to be, they had to reroute that a little bit mainly because of the whole distorting homes over there. But they put a lot of, there was a lot of effort into all that. And nearly most of the major corridor-type studies, the grants are being given for them, but they're containing, you know, hey, we want you to look at these things as well.
If fuel prices continue, we'll all be on a bike path somewhere.
Well, we need to order some buggy.
Well, there goes the methane problem.
So they did, they give you specific grants to apply for for, like trails, that type thing?
They, I know that they, they didn't really mention anything that I could bring back here. They mentioned grants from time to time, but some of that, it sounded like, you know, like you had the MPOs from like Parkersburg or Wheeling or Huntington. They were there. The planners were actually there, and they were definitely in tune with that. And they were, they were well-versed with working, you know, seemed to be working with DOH to try to get their things. I know that the Cape and Bike Trail, they got, from what I was told, most of their funding came from the hotel motel tax over Morgantown. But that was, that trail has gotten a lot of accolades. It's bringing people in that want to come in just to ride that mountain bike trail. So there's certainly, I know in another community in the Midwest that I was involved with and in, they designed a world-class mountain bike trail, and it has been very good to them. They have competitions every year, and it brings in quite a bit of income.
And that was part of the discussion this week was the, at the Porthouse Farm Park, is the bicycle trail, I would consider almost like a mountain trail, to get it rated to where it actually shows.
Yes.
And we would have a very high probability of competition having that video here.
Even the easy trails are fun. Take kids through, just don't take your wife through.
Well, and that's the one up there at Cape Town. They actually designed it for every stage. There is a difficult piece. There is a, you know, but everyone can go there and have fun.
Right.
And it, it's very popular.
All right, well, thank you for the update.
Thank you all for the opportunity.
Take a quick break, and we'll come right back. We'll run a little bit behind.
That was enormous, man. I did that lake house down there.
I bet you, I mean, all the waterline, I see CPDC and waterline and all the pipes. I've been chatting my ten friends for everything. Just all the boxes and stuff I had down there sorted through them.
Yep. All right. All right, next on our agenda, we're back in session. Next on our agenda is Gary Wine, Deputy County Administrator, Tracy Gilmes, Grant Administrator for Gig Ready Application Technical Assistance Process. All right, Mr. Wine and Tracy Elizabeth, tell us what's on your mind.
All this high-tech stuff, gig ready? It was always when I went with my dad, did gig frogs. That's where the first time.
Yeah, I've been gig ready before.
Yeah, I've been prodded a few times.
So if you'll remember several months ago, I kind of told each of you about the grant application where you as the body had to pony up some level of commitment to kind of partner with some of the state monies for it's a, it's a technical design part of actually deploying broadband. This project that we applied for, we labeled it Western Berkeley County, so essentially Route seven to forty-five. This is fiber to your house, holding your hats, you know, property in the valley if this happens because it would be the best of the best out there. This is merely technical assistance help. Once this is done, that opens us up for opportunity to apply and get into the big hundreds of millions of dollars we need to make it happen. This doesn't make anything happen. This just creates increased the option to say, hey, here's what we're going to buy so we can put fiber off the cable into Mr. Winer's house, whoever, Mr. Wine's house. So that's really what this is. Tracy can speak to the grant piece, but made application, we kept in contact, Regent and I, David Dean, we worked fearlessly, keeping our name on top of the hat. When the letter came back of, yeah, you qualify for this, it came back grouping us with Morgan and Jefferson. We had conversations upfront where they wanted us to apply regionally. And I told them and I told Regent nine that this body is committed to moving forward, moves at a pace of its own. We didn't want to get in a position where we were having to deal with other layers of the government or other groups, be it slow us down or speed us up. When it came back, it offered that just as a regional approach. I don't think it affects us and our project and lumps us together, but it just came back. Per that letter, you'll see it. It has Berkeley and Jefferson and Morgan on both ends that have their projects. I think it's just for the designing of the new pieces. They don't cross or tie or touch. We didn't apply that way. That's just when it came back.
This is, this fiber off the cable, where does it hook in?
To your house.
No, at the other end.
At the other end? Well, understand Route nine is already a conduit. There's already pieces of stuff that's on Route nine that could get it connected back. This gets the strings ran out to, through the valley and into the houses and up the.
Is it hardwired or?
This is, this is hardwired fiber off the cable up Sterling Heights or into the addresses on the, everywhere. That's what this design.
This council made an informal financial commitment.
Yeah, it was a million dollars.
It was.
Up to a million.
Up to a million, and that was part of the application, part of what I put on there. And they, you had to commit something. They wouldn't even accept the application without a number. And you had to have some level of, okay, what are you trying to do? When they look at the data that says, okay, run out Route seven, well, imagine they're surprised when you look at all the population that could have gotten to after a year and potential growth of population. So it was extremely attractive. I heard informally, one of the most attractive opportunities on the books because of the return on the investment after the design drawing is done to a partner to build it. Because understanding that, okay, there's forty-seven hundred unserved homes with the population there, but what it does for growth in that area, it makes it extremely attractive to subdivisions and things of that nature.
Is the cost the same for a house on Route seven as it would on Bear Road or something?
It would be different. It would be different. That's all part of the study and that would, Mr. Wine, would all be grant return. There's, there's hundreds of hundreds, might even be billions by now, of money for that kind of expansion. And without this, you can't ask for that. So this is the first step into really making it happen.
When Gary and I talked about this, my concern is, my concern was anytime we get a partnership with another county municipality, we end up doing all the heavy lifting.
Right.
And the financial responsibility or the majority of the financial responsibility pressed for are us. And not to take anything away from Morgan and Jefferson County, but we operate differently. And I don't want to be, I don't want us to be in a position where Gary and Tracy and their departments are doing all the heavy lifting and the county's committed up to a million dollars and Morgan and Jefferson just rides on your cocktails. And you assured me that's not going to be the case.
Well, I assured you that's not how we applied and assured you that the projects are labeled differently, even in the return letter from the state. They're three separate projects. I have to assume when they reached out for their engineering services, because we're right here geographically, they said, hey, from a price point from you back to us, I mean, the state's not.
So is this just for the engineering portion of it or is this for the actual last?
This is just engineering.
Right.
Hundred percent engineering.
Isn't it, aren't they coming from the same feeder to feed all of it? Or are they, I mean, I would think that whatever.
The one, would run out Route seven? Of course. Yes, sir.
No, but I mean, for all three counties. I mean, all three counties are, are they pulling from the same area?
Probably not.
So that's not why they would do this? Is it because they're trying to regionalize the funding so that there's a funding source for this group?
Probably. I might, I, I have no idea, but probably yes. So because of the land and the lay of the land and the clientele, bringing them together just made it more simple for the true engineers to look at because all of the players are going to be the same once it's done, right? The deliverables are going to come from a particular group over here, no matter who they are, much different than what you would see in a high county or a low county or something like that. So, yeah, sure. But for now, our, there are three projects listed. Our project is individual. There's never been any conversation about cost sharing or anything like that. And I would assume as we pick up and move forward with the engineers that it's us and them, our leg of the group. Come on, as Alan said, not us and well, what about this? They don't come close. I don't even know what the other two projects are and where they are in their perspective.
Tracy, was this Jay here or?
Sir. I, I didn't have anything to do with this. I got the letter and when I read through the letter before I was sending it to the attorney's office, I noticed there was inconsistent writing and there was two missing. So I started to talk with Economic Development in Charleston to get the letter correct. So, and it, they've sent three incorrect letters. So I was just working on it to get it through.
The first one had every other page.
Yeah, and then it was, I mean, they had, yeah. And then Jeff had looked over it and said it was, it was fine. But I was only involved to get the process of having it cleared, getting it on the agenda and getting it on Mr. Copenhaber's desk for signature or law.
How, how, how is it, how would the administration of the grant be handled? Is that going to be done as a region or?
It's done for Region nine.
Okay, so they'll, they'll manage to, okay. That's why they're doing a regional or could be, right?
Yeah.
All right, so Mr. Wine, timeline on this study?
Probably a year.
And then, and that's the first piece? And this is the whole thing when you said, because you've talked to us about different things. You talked about the fiber to the house, hardwired, and then also wireless that will actually could be eighteen months rather than five to ten years.
That's correct.
So even something like this would be five to ten years out.
This, that's correct. This, this isn't fast. This is slow. Once the engineering is done, if the bill is given, all the building construction, you understand what, what it would take to get all of that done. The, the utility rates, there probably some will exist, but realistically, by the time dirt's turned and anything happens, you're probably thirty-six months before you saw anything start to happen. The fixed base wireless, which you have a feasibility study on, it's the first one we did, the feasibility study timeline on that is eighteen months to service. It's completely different. And that's, we've talked about that and we've talked about financial commitment. We thought we could build that for less than two million. We thought we could use those resources for other things other than just fixed wireless, right? We have, we build the assets and lease to cellular companies. We build the assets. There's lots of things that fixed base wireless does not compete with home deliverable fiber. They're two completely different handles. It only goes so fast in the air to deliver from multiple points. Fiber to your house is what you see in New York City or all over elsewhere. So two completely different things. If this gets, this did get approved and if the council chooses to go forward, it's, it's a wonderful step in the right direction, but it's not insipid.
And this grant is just for the study?
That is correct. It's just for the technical, it's not really a study. It's the technical design for deliverable for that project, Western Berkeley County.
So you're just asking us to apply for that?
Yeah, and this will give you a document, just like an ASBIL, this will give you a set of build plans to say, okay, we want to expand broadband in Western Berkeley County. We've got it in our pocket. Federal government, can we have, we want to partner with an internet service provider. We need seventy-five million dollars. Yes, get it done in there.
Does, does the internet providers themselves not?
Oh, they've applied.
I guarantee it. They, so would we not be duplicating a engineering service?
Not for engineering, you're not. With this one, they're not going to get money for this engineering out there. The feds aren't going to release monies for engineering in that area. This is it. This is what's happening. There wouldn't be another one. From grant, I'm not saying that an ISP might not want to do it for yourselves. Everybody knows this. They knew our names in the hat. You're, you're one of the few counties that applied for something like this. We were one of the, one of the first, if not the first in the hat.
Well, one of the things I always hear from internet providers is the density's not.
Correct.
High enough.
There's no return.
For us to be able to afford to be profitable for.
Correct.
So how's, I guess, because since the grant is going to be there, now all of a sudden they have zero or very little construction cost now and is profitable.
That's exactly right. That's the purpose of the next level of grant. The next pool of grant money is the build money that takes that return on investment that internet service provider A would have to look at, we have to front seventy-five million to get forty-five hundred homes, return on investment's twenty-five years. Now, all of a sudden, it's federal subsidized grant money that says, we want to provide broadband to a rural community. And when you talk about rural community, if you can get forty-five hundred houses, it's a pretty big return for homes. So then the commitment is between us and them as a partner and their upfront deliverables costs are a third, two-thirds, a third of what they would be because the grant covers the rest and all of a sudden it's done.
They just, yeah, they just did the exact same thing we're talking about down in Virginia where I'm working down there. And there's only thirty thousand people in the whole county and they said by twenty-twenty-five, they'll have wired, fiber to everybody's house.
There's that.
Do you guys know that federal money, I think it was too much of a bill, wasn't it?
Oh, yeah.
It's gargant, it's huge.
Comcast is aware of the potential in, in the western part of the county before Paul Combs retired. He and I actually had a conversation.
Oh, he retired?
Yeah, he retired a month ago. A month ago. Yeah, Paul, Paul retired. He wanted to know when it got to that point, when it got beyond the design, whether I thought the county would be willing to partner with Comcast. And I told him, you know, absolutely, when it got to that point, we would be willing to sit down and have that conversation that ultimately was your decision to make, but that staff's recommendation would be that they would be kind of our vendor of choice. So I know Comcast is aware of this.
Very much.
And they're very much.
They're all of the players are aware.
What about the rest of them, Ken?
Pardon?
What about the rest of them?
You had, you had to pick a project and it couldn't be a blanket, hey, my county. You had to identify a project. We worked with Region nine and data drives it, Mr. Barnhart. And when you look at distance, the population, homes out Route seven, you had the shiny light. You just tried to get it to go a little further west. No, it, it just worked from the numbers. There are still points in the county that are un and underserved, which go back to Mr. Copenhaber's question about the fixed base wireless. So there's opportunities. The problem is you kind of have to pick your, pick your devices, a million here, million and a half there, all of a sudden Alan's hair starts falling.
Out Shepherdstown Road, there's a potential subdivision out there of eight hundred homes.
Correct. Right? And, and again, you could identify. They look at, they look at span, distance, and Route seven's four miles, five miles? The forty-five, how long is that? Longer than that.
Thirteen.
Thirteen miles.
Yeah, nine to forty-five, yeah.
Imagine growth opportunity across there along with capturing the homes that are inside.
Most people out there probably don't want the growth.
Growth doubt.
But they want the service.
No doubt. Right? But they come together. Right? And if, if you're going to build a five hundred home subdivision, you're going to build it where broadband's available. You're not going to build it out there right now.
So I could wait for another twenty years for the program?
Well, he's got a plan to do it in eighteen months.
We can do it in eighteen months. One point eight minutes.
I think we saw when the schools were shut down and children were, were forced to learn from home, that, that area was very, very underserved. And, you know, I, I think that we have that ability to improve that service. I think we really need to look into that.
I remember back when Doc Quinlan was on the school board, I mean, that was, and Gary was in that conversation, I think Alan was too, that Back Creek Valley Elementary School was a big concern about not being able to reach their, their student population.
Yeah, I know a lot of folks had to actually leave from their homes and go to the school so they could have connectivity.
Yeah, well, we talked about, I was in that kind of shade. We talked about trying to help that school out with some type of service.
Well, but it wasn't.
It wasn't school.
It wasn't the school. It was the, it was the households.
Right.
Yeah, clarified that the next day and no, the school's fine. It's the households. So they were piping internet there somehow through the air. I mean.
Yeah.
All right, so what do y'all want to do? Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put on the record, Penny, that there's people out there that thinks that Doug Copenhaber's got a bunch of property in Back Creek Valley one time I did. I do not. I only have my shop, which is, has fiber already and one piece down the road, it's only ten acres and it's only one lot. So I want to put that on record. I think that's all I got. Yeah. So entertain a motion to apply for this grant for the technical assistance of four.
Gig ready.
Have motion for, have second. On any further discussion? If not, all favors say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
I mean, just for, you have, just, you stand, disagree with it. You're getting second done because you're not, this is just formality, it's already.
Okay. All right.
The paper that needs to be signed by you, it needs three to five people for a committee that will meet with the three to five people from the other counties and Region nine and the economic development and the engineer.
So we need a three-person committee from our county?
Minimum of.
They call it an executive committee.
And when's this, when are they, how soon are they meeting?
It, it doesn't, it doesn't say in the letter, but after they receive this, then they're, receive this signed back from the counties and we're setting up a kickoff meeting.
How long is the plan? How long of a timeframe is this going to be?
They do not put dates or timelines, but Gary says fast, so.
The scope should be done back, they talked about, probably about a year to return.
The only reason I'm asking, I mean, there's no reason for Dan and I to, Dan or I to sit on this committee if, if it's not, not going to be finished in six months. Okay, so, so one of you three and whoever. I'm sure you want a councilperson on it, right?
It does, I don't believe it says the council has to put that committee. You don't have to appoint the committee.
All right, so we know, you don't have to have the committee, you don't have to have the committee today, right?
Um, they would like to pack, but if, I'm sure if you do.
If we get with you the committee for tomorrow.
I'll, I'll write them and tell them that you're in discussion.
Before the, before Tuesday of next week.
Okay.
All right, okay. All right, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Did we do that right, Tracy?
Yes.
All right, next on our agenda is Alan Davis, County Administrator, State Budget Revision Number Twelve, Fund Zero Zero One.
State Budget Revision Number Twelve. Since we did the last one, we've received eighteen checks. You'll notice for the past couple of months, the state budget revisions are much smaller than they had typically been in the past. That's only because Sherry and Penny are now taking care of the ACHs separate from this. We didn't need to run these through the state budget revision. So we still have the same amount of activity, it's just that we're not running the ACHs through here any longer. Eighteen checks, not anything really of, of special note. Information technology had, had the largest amount of dollar amount, any amount, one-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand-seventeen dollars, with the biggest check being from emergency communications. As you know, we bill emergency communications annually for a triple net lease. And then IT keeps track of the, the time that they spend and then they bill them once annually for IT services which are payable or allowed under the public service conditions. So the amount of that payment was a hundred fifty-seven thousand seventy-seven dollars. So I'm recommending that we put a hundred sixty-six thousand seventeen dollars in the IT budget, which we need to, to kind of balance some of the deficits that are in there that we're anticipating the, the inflow of this money. Ten thousand four hundred fifty-five dollars will go into contingency. Eight thousand four hundred thirteen dollars will go in the Sheriff's Department overtime. The, the week or so ago, the council authorized eighteen thousand infusion of overtime money for ATV patrol. And the sheriff had four hundred thirty dollars in overtime reimbursement for Jefferson County. And then two hundred twelve dollars will go into Sheriff's Department travel. And that was just a reimbursement from the Appalachia Haida region for some P-card expenses that the sheriff had incurred.
That's eight thousand overtime.
Yeah, eight thousand in overtime, four hundred thirteen reimbursements. So the total is eight thousand four hundred thirteen dollars.
Looks like we had quite a good bit of scrap metal.
We did. As we're getting ready for the new roof, one seven fifty, we're actually removing a lot of the rooftop units and recycling as much as we can.
That was a ton.
Yep.
Almost nine thousand dollars in scrap. All right, entertain a motion for State Budget Revision Number Twelve, Fund Zero Zero One.
Second.
Has been made second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Now we're moving on to picking back up on the capital and land development project.
Yes, sir. Last week, we got down through the upgrade for the LED lighting and replacement of the HVAC systems for three eighty West South Street and five ten South Rowley Street. The council did commit to those projects. We have the first invoice on my desk, which you'll have on your purchase order log, for purchasing the, some of the, the LED lighting equipment. The next matter for your discussion is three fifteen West Stevens Street, which is the Crawford Building. As you know, several years ago, we did have some initial plans, plans done to convert the Crawford Building into the, to an annex of the Judicial Center to House primarily. Magistrate Court, a month or so ago, the council did walk the, the Judicial Center and at that time, you gave me the direction to move forward with developing the construction plans. We met with Josh Bauer last Thursday afternoon. He brought the, the plans in. A councilperson, Gokenhour, sat in on that meeting. They will be developing the, the construction drawings. The total square footage of that building is thirty-six thousand four hundred twenty square feet. I used four hundred dollars a square foot for renovations. Josh thinks I'm, I'm way high. The week or so ago, the council authorized eighteen thousand infusion of overtime money for ATV patrol. And the sheriff had four hundred and thirty dollars in overtime reimbursement from Jefferson County. And then two hundred and twelve dollars will go into Sheriff's Department travel. And that was just a reimbursement from the Appalachia Haida region for some P-card expenses that the sheriff had incurred.
That's eight thousand overtime.
Yeah, eight thousand in overtime, four hundred and thirteen reimbursements, so the total is eight thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars.
Looks like we had quite a good bit of scrap metal.
We did, as we're getting ready for the new roof, on seven fifty, we're actually removing a lot of the rooftop units and recycling as much as we can.
That was a ton.
Yep.
Almost nine thousand dollars in scrap. All right, entertain a motion for State Budget Revision Number Twelve, Fund Zero Zero One.
Second.
Has been made second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries, now we're moving on to picking back up on the capital and land development project.
Yes, sir, last week, we got down through the upgrade for the LED lighting and replacement of the HVAC systems for three eighty West South Street and five ten South Rowley Street, the council did commit to those projects. We have the first invoice on my desk, which you'll have on your purchase order log, for purchasing the, some of the the LED lighting equipment. The next matter for your discussion is three fifteen West Stevens Street, which is the Crawford Building. As you know, several years ago, we did have some initial plans, plans done to convert the Crawford Building into the, to an annex of the Judicial Center to house primarily magistrate court. A month or so ago, the council did walk the Judicial Center, and at that time, you gave me the direction to move forward with developing the construction plans. We met with Josh Bauer last Thursday afternoon, he brought the the plans in, a council person, Gokenhour, said in on that meeting. They will be developing the the construction drawings. The total square footage of that building is thirty-six thousand four hundred and twenty square feet. I used four hundred dollars a square foot for renovations, Josh thinks I'm I'm way high. You know, I'd I'd always rather be a little a little high when it comes to construct, projectional construction costs than to have to go back in and ask you for additional money. So thirty-six thousand four hundred, four hundred and twenty square feet at four hundred dollars a square foot comes out to fourteen million five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. That money is, for that project is eligible for American Rescue Plan Act funding. However, you have committed some some additional funding, you've committed one thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars for the addition to the Health Department, seven thousand three hundred and five dollars in change for the renovations to this building. And I plugged in seven million dollars for the HVAC system, which totals fifteen thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars for fifteen million nine hundred and forty-six thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars. We've also set aside two million dollars for, as a as a pool of money for some potential funding of nonprofit agencies, which leaves a balance of a little bit more than five million dollars of available American Rescue Act money.
That's before the Crawford.
That's before the Crawford Building.
So the renovations to the Crawford Building would be a hundred percent eligible to be funded through the American Rescue Plan?
Maybe the city of Martinsburg would be willing to give us some of their money to help them.
Yeah. I'd be willing to make Josh a bet that I'd probably be closer to him.
I, that's why I used four hundred dollars a square foot, he actually thought it was going to be under three hundred dollars a square foot, and he had like two fifty.
I think it's going to be over three, but I don't think it's going to be, I don't think it's going to be a lot of.
Well, his thought process was that 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 the, it's a, it's a good building. They've been through it, he said, you know, structurally, it's very, very sound. And we're not putting up, you know, exterior walls, it's just a matter of going in and.
All the, all the masonry is going to have to be repainted, all the windows, all the wood's going to have to be redone on the windows and new windows. The roof's got to be torn off of it and redone for insulated panels, there's a lot of work there.
So I plugged in four hundred a square foot. He seems to think that materials are starting to, the price materials are starting to stabilize a little bit, by the fall, we may actually start seeing.
They'll start coming down.
Decreases in material.
They'll have to.
Well, but I agree with you, I agree, you're better off to estimate high and and not need what you're what you're allocating there than than come in low and not have the money to finish the job.
Well, plus you're going to have to furnish that whole place too.
Pardon me?
We'll have, I mean, have to put the furniture in it too. Plus you have the the outfitting of the of my courtrooms and stuff like that, that's not cheap stuff.
Particularly decide to do like in the courtrooms, and the millwork won't be as as extensive as we are in the circuit courtrooms. But we'll still have some millwork involved.
Sure. All right, so what what do y'all want to do on three fifteen Stevens Street? This is something that's, I'm not going to say it's something that we look forward to, but I think it's a more, a little bit more of something that's going to be mandated to do. Have the room.
We need room for the the new magistrate that comes on board July first. But I think we all agree that we're going to see additional magistrates and circuit judges in the next, what do you think, any two or three years?
Twenty twenty-four, they're going to reevaluate it again.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, my opinion, I think you should, I think you should add about five million to that and add the parking garage in.
I have the parking garage, then if you look down at miscellaneous projects, I have some, I have four projects down here that we, that we.
That we spoke about.
That we spoke of, but we really haven't.
Oh, you don't have a, I was looking at funding, I didn't see.
All right, so, so. And when you say five million dollars left out American Rescue, that's the total amount, not just the first draw, right?
That's of the twenty-three one thirty-seven seven fifty. And I'm not saying that we necessarily, you know, total projects that kind of we tend to have been committed to is almost forty-eight million dollars. That includes parks, although it doesn't include development parks. Of that forty-seven million, twenty-three million is through American Rescue Act. We're paying a million sixty out of the general fund for the for the roof. And we're paying ninety million, or ninety thousand eight eighty-one out of Pope Severance. And sixty thousand and now Pope Severance, what we can cover out of this year's budget, but so there's, there's going to be, there's roughly going to be a balance of, you know, twenty, twenty million dollars. Now, as we walk through this project, kind of keep in the back of your mind, we can issue, we can borrow money. If we, we can borrow up to ten million dollars a year, it's bank qualified. So as we move forward, if you decide you want, say, for example, you wanted to do the forty-seven million dollars worth of projects. All all but about twenty million dollars is going to be funded either through general fund, Pope Severance, or American Rescue Plan fund. So we could, we could at least hypothetically issue ten million dollars of bank qualified bonds or borrow twenty million dollars, we put an RFQ out. Or the ten million dollars this year, and then we have it programmed to do another ten million dollars in in January. We have had some tentative discussions with bond underwriters. Seem to think that financially, we're probably in a better, as far as our bond rate, overall bond rating goes. Probably in better shape than we were two years ago. The uncertainty of COVID is is behind us. And the state of West Virginia is only one of a handful of states in the entire nation whose rainy day fund is over a billion dollars right now, so that certainly will benefit us. Seem to think that at a minimum, we could get a one bond upgrade, or maybe even a two bond upgrade, although I think that might be a stretch. And we're looking at an interest rate of not one point six six, like we got a couple of years ago, but maybe around three, three if we want.
But that's an unstable market as well, so I think the, I think it's important to make that decision. If we're going to make that decision, I think to make that decision to move forward is is something that we should be, if we're going to do it, now's the time to do it.
Right, and and as you know, when we decide that we're going to, we're going to do that, it's not, I mean, it's a process that will take us months. By the time we go through, you know, moves, it it will take a while, and that's why I'm saying I think the intent would be to do twenty mil, if you decide to do a twenty million in ten million dollar increments. And we could do the underwriting all at one time, we would just do two separate issues.
I would think that we would do the Crawford Building on a bond and get ten million dollars of it this year. Then ten million, and then the remainder next year. Is what I'm thinking. What are y'all thinking? Because one of the things in my head tells me that that we're going to summon out American Rescue money. We're being looked at, of being, and not that I'm totally in favor of it, but we're going to be looked at to give between us and the Water District some of that money towards some waterline improvements that we're asking everybody else for. Not going to go over well if we don't, and not.
And I think that that was a general consensus.
Well, that was a census on the very beginning, was water, sewer.
Yeah, I thought that was part of the discussion, perhaps with other entities, that if they're going to put money in, that we were prepared to do that also.
Yeah.
That's the conversation we had in March Charleston.
Not so much the county council, but local money.
Right.
So a lot of my thought, when I said local money, is a large portion of that's got to come from the Water District. And at that time, they said they could do up to like twenty-some million or something, I thought.
We're doing to get a total of twenty-three million one thirty-seven five seventy, we should get the dis, the second distribution in the community, hopefully. And I've been committed a million six, we've committed seven point three million, and you've committed, at least on my list, seven million dollars towards the HVAC system in South Rowley Street, or I'm sorry, South Street. That's a total of fifteen point nine million. That gives you a balance of seven point one million, if you back out the two million dollars that we put aside for the nonprofits, that would give you a five million dollars that you could keep in reserve to help out with water projects.
All right.
And if you decide to do that, and then anything beyond that that you decide to do, you can do, like I said, some some bond money.
Well, I think that, I think the thought process, and correct me if I'm wrong, Doug, I thought when we were adding up numbers, we were thinking that it was going to be about six million dollars that we would have to come up with.
For the water?
Yeah.
Well, you've got to think that was a moving target too, at one time it was seventy-six million, now it's a hundred something.
No, 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 I mean, as as trying to match what the state was going to do and and with the funds that the Water Department was going to be able to kick in i- if if we got the twenty-six off them and then came up with twenty-six.
Yeah, I I know we was talking about twenty-six million dollars being a local match.
Right.
Sure. Again, most of that money comes from the Water District, because we just.
Right.
There you go, that seven million dollar HVAC.
Right, and then the Water Department did the two twenty million.
The seven million dollar HVAC.
Took us a little bit of time to get it out of them, but yeah, they said, I can't remember the exact number.
Now, that's pretty close. Okay.
And and one of the reasons why we're looking at doing this project, these projects nationally, because we need to do them. And the other reason is, is that the American, the federal government is looking for us to be able to show them where that money's going to go.
Right.
I don't want people to think we're going to spend this break.
Well, you've committed to to this building, so we have, we are definitely going to use that for this building, and we should have probably the construction plans. We should have the construction plans in the next couple of weeks, I know Kevin and the engineer spent most of the week here this week going through this building and looking at the site for the addition to five twenty.
All right, so. Again, I think the Crawford Building is something we need to put a bond out for. And I think it's going to have to be nationally split up into two years. Moving on down to, everybody okay with that?
And once we have the construction plans done, of course, next week bids are due on the addition to the Health Department. We'll be opening those next Thursday. Once the construction plans go on the street, well, of course, we'll go through the pre-bid. It will get some final figures on on this building, and it will follow through the same process with the Crawford Building, so we'll have a pretty, we'll have a better idea. And until we have those numbers, you know, council, once we open the bids and the council can decide whether you want to move forward or not. But in the meantime, we need to start the process with borrowing ten million dollars of bank qualified money, if it's okay with the council.
All right.
Warehouse Farm.
Yeah, how's the land and water stuff? I know we've got to have plans, we've got to do.
Even before we start the grant, we have to have the environmental study and your plan and cost.
Phase one environmental?
Well, the I know there's Parks and Rec has the plan for North Berkeley. Only thing we would need would be a phase one, probably, if it hasn't already been done. And it only got a cost, so, so North Berkeley Park is something that's ready to go.
But is that a one-time dip that you can get for one park, or can you get it for multiple? I thought we had that conversation.
We did have that conversation, and it was multiple, individual project. So North Berkeley is one project, South Berkeley will be another project.
Can it be used for land acquisition?
I think I answered, answered that question.
You did, my memory is that sure.
I don't want to figure out, I know that water does not have to be on the property.
I thought you said that it could be.
I I I know that I, I know that there's a grant that is for acquisition.
That's it.
Is it, is that the one, okay.
So. So Poorhouse Farm could qualify for that really easy, all you got to do is call Winchester Environmental, have the phase one.
Yeah, I mean, we can have phase one done for you.
But I thought that, I thought we had that whole conversation once already about that being the the larger cost, why not go for it on that project as opposed to the other one?
Let's see, flat, flat it, yeah, okay, yeah. Because this, the the North Berkeley, it's ready to go, yeah, they're, they're, they've already went through planning.
Yeah, but how much are you talking about?
Three fifty. Three fifty.
He's got a lot of income.
Yeah, Poorhouse Farm is going to be altogether over a million dollars.
Don't forget, and and it's, I haven't, and that's my mistake, I didn't include this as a funding source, but we still have, we have three million dollars set aside for quality of life that we have not, that we'll be getting anytime, Anthony, we should be getting a payment from Torch Energy. That's four fifty, something, at least, I think it's four fifty. And when we had what's his name?
Sam.
Yeah, when we had Sam on the phone a couple of weeks ago, he acknowledged that as soon as they got to that point, that within the next month or so, we'll have that four hundred and fifty thousand dollar payment, so that'll put you over three million dollars in your.
Why don't we do, why don't we do North Berkeley under that? Because Torch Energy, if being on north end, north end of the county, that works out perfect.
Tracy, to apply for the funding for the seventy-plus or minus acres out at Poorhouse Farm, do we need to have, we have a letter of intent for just that, we executed that in December, we have three years to do something. Should, do we need to have a preliminary design for that before we could even purchase, before we could purchase it?
That could just be for the purchase of land, now there is a design, well, it's actually for existing Poorhouse Farm, where trails and stuff, I think that's a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Right, but I think you, I would think you could go, if you're going to, isn't that what the thought process was, to extend trails out there for biking? I mean, I would think that would be something that you could get a cost on fairly easily to do that, especially when you're looking at it already on on other parks. So why not put that together in part of that application?
And we're in the process of selecting a firm to do some part of design for us in South Berkeley. And the intent is to to select a firm that not only will do. And the intent is to, to select a firm that not only will do South Berkeley, but do some of this other design work for us too, so. Um, yeah, hopefully in the next week or so, we'll have a decision made on that.
Alright, so I'm jumping around a bit. North Berkeley three fifty out of the, out of the, uh,
Quality Fund.
Quality Life Fund. Seven, the Poorhouse Farm, we gotta work aggressively on phase one and a, if we don't have a, can't get a plan done in a timely manner, then I, I would like to at least get the purchase price taken care of. And that's probably, I'm thinking it's all going to be closer to eight than seven fifty if I'm not mistaken. I might be wrong.
Gary, for the Poorhouse Farm, Marcellus. We could do that almost like we did in Woodland. I mean, we could submit.
Create a plan, an house plan.
We, we did that, we did that down at, down at Inwood and we did that primarily for purposes of state highways, but.
Yes, Eddie, if you want to get a hold of Chris and find out what the thought process or not, I know that they got that one trail that they want to add. I'm thinking it was to the existing park.
It was.
That was a hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
Yeah.
And that, even that trail could be funded out of quality life. Agree with that? Cause that's not on here, right?
The trail for what?
Poorhouse Farm, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand to enhance the trail.
That's the one we were talking about this morning, Eddie. That's the one we were talking about this morning?
Yeah, that's the one that's like over here.
Yeah, like Marty Snook Park.
Right. Let's do, let's do those two under the, under the quality of life count.
Is that a hundred and twenty-eight?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm going to plug in a hundred and fifty.
Alright.
And that'll, that'll commit five hundred thousand on the quality of life.
Okay.
It was pretty much my understanding that with that additional acres that they were just going to basically expand.
Right.
Uh, Poorhouse Farm Park into that additional acreage.
That's seventy acres?
With no plants immediately.
No, but at, at the same time, you know, areas that can be cleared out, you know, for.
Something small.
Yeah, trails.
Alright, so. But I do want to move pretty quickly on the purchase price act, land acquisition. Don't like owing people money like that.
So, so why, why can't we get a price, the Parks and Rec should be able to create a, a thought process on a price to do some clearing, some initial, um, opening up of that property, making it accessible. You know, I would think we'd be able to put a budget line in to be able to do that and at least add that much into it as opposed to, you know, coming up with a whole trail plan or whatever. At least add some, you know what I'm talking about, some initial funding to.
Kind of just take the, the trails that they have out there now with a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars and duplicating that back over on that one.
Yeah, why couldn't you do that and use that to, to either create trails or open up some ground so that it's accessible, that type of thing.
Yeah, could do it. I mean, you're going to be, Poorhouse Farm for the land acquisition and the trails, you can probably be about a million dollars.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
Alright.
Find the seminole.
Did she say no problem?
No problem.
Sportsman Paradise, you've already done. World Park, you've already done.
Um, in, we're going to have more discussion regarding sportsmen's next week.
Frog Hollow, you've got that taken care of.
Correct.
Uh, so there are any other ones we have is the missile launch projects.
Um, we've got some, we have a tentative price for refurbishing of the Dunn Building, Water Tower. I know that's something that the council identified that you might be interested in. Um, it was about two hundred thousand dollars and that was just to put the, the protective barriers up and scrape the tower and remain it. That didn't include the seal or any lettering or anything like that. I didn't know if that was something that you wanted me to do an RFP, put on the street and pursue.
Water towers, I've talked to.
No, but it has a bunch of antennas on it that we really depend on.
Do you have one that's swimming up there yet, Joe?
No, I haven't.
Got a real nice diving platform on there.
I thought from my understanding, the city said it's accessible to be used. It's just not, it's not, uh.
I think they've indicated, they're not interested in it.
No, you're, you're right. They, they thought for the complex here, if anything, but. But I, I, what I'm, what I'm getting at is I don't know that it's not hooked up. I think it's, uh, I think it's still tied into the system.
Well, that, that's in order to use it being that, that price that I could deal up well over a million dollars to do inside any outside.
My, my only thought is, you know, we're going to be putting a lot of money into this complex. Crawford Building, this building, um, we're going to be addressing the windows and the front facade, the front entrance to this building off of Stevens Street. Uh, as part of that whole process, I'd like to redo the parking lots.
Which one, which, I'm, I'm listening to you.
We're putting the, we're putting the, we're going to bump out the back part of this building to accommodate the ambulance authority.
Right.
We're also going to redo the, the entrance, the main entrance off of Stevens Street. Um, replacing the, the remainder of the old windows. You know, the complex looking.
About repark paving the area right here.
Yeah, repaving, re-straining.
Oh, around this building, not across the street?
No, no, around this building.
Alright, yeah.
Yeah, it just seems like, you know, the water tower is becoming nice.
Well, let's, let's hope, let's hope that we can do that in the renov- building renovations right now. That was like eight, seven point three million.
So, do you at least want me to go out for, get RFP, do an RFP, go out and see what.
Yes, do that.
I'll take care of that. Alright.
And, and then I think Josh said he had somebody or s- we, we need to get, maybe get a, a cost estimate on the parking garage.
Josh works with a firm, um, for a very reasonable cost. They don't do parking, they're construction. Um, but what they do is they'll come in and do an assessment of total number of employees, um, the foot, you know, foot activity.
Preliminary draw, preliminary planning.
Right.
Possibly talking about secured parking for the judicial center.
And they would do that, tell us how many spots we need and the best way to have it designed.
I think we need to go forward with that.
We just look at having, we want to start that process. Uh, then you have four twenty-four, twenty and a half, South Rowley Street, which is the old bank building, the old jail, um.
Well, we won't need to do anything with that.
I just want that on your list.
Yeah.
And then keep in the back of your mind, once we have the.
Done building done?
Done building finished, we have the circuit. Um, we have the county clerk down there. We need to think about what we're going to do.
That's going to be three years out.
Can, yeah, that's a couple of years, but.
That's somebody else's issue.
That'd be Eddie's, that'd be Eddie's second term. He can work on Mr. Rick or third term.
Alright.
Alright, I got.
Jimbo?
Mine is here.
Alright, um, so we have, okay. Alright, anything else?
No, sir. I do need executive session for real estate, um, exec, uh, economic development and litigation.
Yeah, so we got all three. Alright, we're in the executive session.
Oh, yeah.
Alright, we're back in session. No action will be taken. Mr. Barnard, if you do the honors?
Mr. Prendergast will have to do the honor and then recesses.
We are recessed.